Okay, hello everyone. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Mr. Roberts, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Falcoff.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Pelletin.
Here.
Mr. Sermon.
Here.
Ms. Choka Urban.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here. This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under a stay-at-home order issued by Governor J.B. Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the zoning board of appeals. And this evening, we're conducting our business in compliance with the state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access Channel 6. It is also being broadcast on the Internet on YouTube Live. And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/thewillageofwillmetlive. To participate in the meeting, you can join through Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.willmet.com to find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel 6 or on YouTube and call in to the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 305-349-930. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the zoning board of appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests adjoining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence and applications for variances from our zoning ordinance, applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make recommendation, a recommendation to the village board of trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review as set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The village board of trustees will consider the recommendations we made this evening at the next regularly scheduled meeting on October 27. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board has final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the village board of trustees to approve that application, a super majority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's one other small peculiarity to our proceedings. We operate instead, we operate not by majority vote, by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an applicant, an application must receive four affirmative votes. We have six members here present tonight, and so obviously we'll need four of the six to have an affirmative recommendation. In recognition of the fact that we need four of the six and one is not, we are missing one member, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is October 21. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance, and no such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is called, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it's not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention as to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has a chance to speak, we'll open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. Any through YouTube chat, team chat, or email will also, will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will ask, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be members of the board. Now, before I proceed to the next step, which is to swear in the witnesses, one of our board members has requested, has made a request that, given the amount of, but I will let Brad proceed, Brad, Mr. Falcoff.
Thank you.
His request to the board, and I would like to point out, whatever we decide or whatever we recommend needs the consent of the applicant. So, Mr. Falcoff, please proceed.
Thank you, Reinhardt. I'm referring to property 1174 Michigan Avenue. We have, and I realize that there are probably a number of people who are here tonight who are prepared to speak either for or against the application, but we have received during the course of this past week, a substantial amount of information about the request being made by the owners of 1174 Michigan Avenue. We've even received information as late as yesterday and today. It's a lot of information to digest. It even includes a legal opinion in the latest group of information that we received. I consider this to be serious matter because it has broad ramifications, and I think it deserves the utmost care and consideration and thoughtfulness as we approach the issues that are raised by the application. For that reason, I was asking or suggesting that we consider postponing discussion of 1174 Michigan Avenue until our next meeting, when we have had the opportunity to digest all of the information that we have been provided, and so that everybody has an opportunity to speak, and we have a full opportunity to carefully consider all of the information. Thank you.
Before I ask the applicant to weigh in on this, can I have any comments from the rest of the board members on the subject that Mr. Brad Falcoff raised?
I would say that Brad's point is well-made, and I'm in agreement with it.
This is Bob Sermon. I agree with Brad. You know, some of the information we didn't receive until after, I believe it was four o'clock today, and I had other commitments and was unable to review the information.
And I, this is Riley Pelletin. I certainly have no objection to postponing it to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Having heard from the members of the board on this request, we need, the final say is with the applicant. If he asks us to proceed, we will of course proceed. So I, the floor is yours.
Chairman Schneider, Chris Canning on behalf of the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to turn it over to Ron Kope, who is here with me to address this particular issue. Ron?
I believe Mr. Kope may still be muted. Mr. Kope, we can't hear what you're saying, or at least I cannot.
Okay, well, let me, let me proceed. It is the applicant's intent to proceed this evening. We have a number of witnesses lined up to testify. The matter at hand is really quite straightforward. Despite all the memorandums, photographs, what we're really talking about is a backyard case. There is no issue about whether the applicants can have offense. There's no issue.
Mr. Canning, if I may interrupt, you will obviously have plenty of time to make your case. So you, on behalf of your client, you're saying we should proceed, and we will. That's your decision.
Yes, please. And I believe there's a number of other people who would like to speak in objection to it, so I believe they're available this evening. So I think we should proceed because a great many people are here to go ahead.
Okay, so now I will go to the next step and to the swearing in. This, this meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here planning to testify tonight, I will ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say "I do."
I do.
I do.
I do.
I may also add that as we go through these various cases, and there are probably a lot of testimony that we're going to hear, if there's anyone that, that plans to testify that has not been sworn in, please let me know, and I will proceed to swear you in at that time. With that, Mr. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
Our first case on the agenda is 2020Z28, 305 Wilshire Drive West. This case was tabled from our last meeting. It was not discussed at the last meeting. The applicant has since withdrawn, so there is no action that needs to be taken. This item has been removed from our queue.
All right. That was an easy decision.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Mr. Kope?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Welcome to the meeting.
Oh, thank you. I'm glad that I was able to get through to you. I, I had one very simple point if we're going to proceed, and it relates to that issue of the table. I think it's important for the zoning board to understand that the only issue before them is the height of the fence. The village has already agreed that the fence can be built, that it can be built in the location where it's planned to be built, and so 99% of all of the material that-
Mr. Kope, can I interrupt? We will, we will proceed at the time we, your case comes up, you can, you can then make your points. So can we proceed, Lisa, Ms. Roberts, to the next case?
Yes, our next case on the agenda is 2020Z29, 730 Laurel Avenue. This is a request for a 1.77-foot side yard deck setback variation and a 0.77-foot side yard deck stair setback variation to permit the construction of a new deck. I believe the, and I believe the owner is here as well.
Welcome. Please identify yourself and make your case.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also thanks to Lisa for her guidance in preparing this filing. My name is Manahem Kemijona, and we, as the introduction stated, are requesting variance for the construction of a deck, a fairly minor variance, less than two feet for the deck. We believe there are four reasons or standards that would qualify for a variance. Briefly, you know, relocating the, the entry door would impose a practical difficulty or hardship. I think most importantly, the current situation was not caused by us. The house was built in 1915, and this is the original entry. And the other two reasons relate to the uniqueness of the situation, and certainly any housing that was built subsequent to the current zoning would have already been in compliance. So I'll stop there and certainly glad to take any questions from the committee.
Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none.
I guess I, this is Bob, sorry. Just to, there was an existing stair, and you're relocating the edge of the deck at the same location of that existing railing that was adjacent to the neighbor, correct?
We're keeping the proximity to the lot line exactly the same. We're just shifting the stairs out a bit.
Okay. So the, yeah, okay. And that's really the only issue with this, I believe, right, is the encroachment?
Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, we can close the testimony, and we can, do we have a motion?
There is one question. Did, did we hear from any neighbors about this? Is there any correspondence that the owner had with the neighbors?
Personally, no correspondence. We have spoken to the neighbor that is just east of us, which would be the closest, and they're very supportive. And in fact, we are copying their deck design exactly, so they inspired us.
Okay. Well, I'm prepared to make a motion then.
Go ahead.
I move to recommend granting a request for a 1.77-foot side yard, or 1.77-foot side yard deck setback variation and a 0.77-foot side yard deck stair setback variation to permit the construction of a new deck at 730 Laurel Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second?
This is fairly straightforward. It really shouldn't impact the neighbors. I agree, there is a hardship with the existing door and where it's located, and it wouldn't make sense to shift that to remodel. So I believe it's straightforward, and I could support it.
Ms. Choka Urban?
I, I agree with Bob. I think this is a very minor request in the scheme of things, and I can also support
This is Riley Pelletin. I wanted to say that while I agree with what Maria and Bob have said about it being minor and really not affecting the neighbors tremendously, there is an option to leave the stairs where they are and to build a deck on the other side of the stairs. And in that case, you wouldn't need a variation for the, the deck setback, I don't believe. But be that as it may, I can support this.
Okay, then I, I can support it also, and I think it meets the standards of review. For them to not be in line with that part of the building, which has the, the exit door, would make it very awkward to, with the stairway. So I, it's fairly small, and there are no objections from the neighbors, so I could support it. There are no other comments? Can we call for a vote? Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So that goes with a affirmative recommendation to the board of trustees.
I moved to ask the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2020-C-29.
I'll second that.
Call the, call the vote, the roll on the vote.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So, so the board will consider this case on October 27. And we hear, hear the next case, Ms. Roberts.
Our next case is 2020Z32, 3140 Willmet Avenue. This is a request for a 97.91 square foot lot coverage variation and a 1,135.9 square foot total floor area variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition for an elevator on the legal non-conforming structure. And I believe the applicants are all here.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Schneider, Christopher Canning representing Laura Alter Clapman and Howard Clapman. I'd like to thank Lisa for preparing the packet. Laura Alter Clapman is here. I don't see her right now, but she was on earlier. And the architect, Dennis Kulak, I know I talked to him. I see, I believe he's here, but I don't see him right now. Okay, so Dennis is here. Laura?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. So Chairman Schneider, while the cover page of the packet makes this look like a very large request, in fact, it is quite modest. Laura will tell you that she has been a resident of Willmet for most of the last 60 years. In her professional career, she was involved in building at least 30 homes in Willmet. She bought 3140 Willmet in 1987 and demolished the home in 1990. Since 1990, there have been several changes to the zoning ordinance, which now makes this a legal non-conforming structure in both floor area and lot coverage. The Clapmans love their home, and they love Willmet, and they want to stay in this home, but they both face mobility challenges, and that is why an elevator is necessary. As Dennis will explain to you, they looked at various locations in and outside of the home and eventually decided in an area which is in a covered patio in the rear northwest corner of the house, so they could go from the first floor directly to the master. The elevator shaft will run from the patio up to the master and will add approximately 26.65 square feet. This shaft will be screened on the south side and the east side from the neighbors due to the building, and from the west side and north side due to fencing and planting. And I think it's important to note that all four neighbors have written letters of support, and we are not aware of any objections to the proposal. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Laura to tell you a little bit about why they're seeking an elevator, and then Dennis will talk to you about the nuts and bolts of how he designed the elevator and came to this location and this size. So Laura, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Chris has pretty much told you about my, our history, my history for sure. I've been in Willmet all these years, and this has been more than just home. This is our community, and we want to stay here. But my husband is unable to walk the stairs anymore. Right now, he's practically climbing up the stairs and down the stairs in order to go to bed at night. So, and I have some macular degeneration, losing some of my eyesight. So it would be very helpful for me to be in a place that I'm familiar with. Oh, we, you know, the elevator will be explained to you by our architect, Dennis, with whom I've worked very closely on several buildings. And as Chris already said, all of our neighbors are favorite for us. So I don't think there's anything more I could say.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Dennis, the floor is yours. If you could explain to the zoning board, number one, how the location was chosen; number two, what alternatives you considered; and number three, how you designed the elevator for this location.
Okay. We were the architects for the original house as it was constructed back, I think it was 1990. I've been with KLM for well over 50 years, and have worked with Laura Alter Clapman for about almost all of that time. And so we spent probably five hours in the house with the plans, trying to find a location that we could put it inside the house. The issue was, when you put an elevator in, you can't have a tolerance less than an eighth of an inch from top to bottom. So in a three-story house with a basement, you have to be able to go all the way from the basement to the second floor and have a rise over the second floor, and it all has to line up. We looked at areas of taking out a closet, taking area from the powder room. Nothing would line up. When you would make two floors line up, you couldn't make the third floor line up. So the other, only other alternative was look for a place to add it to the exterior. They no longer use that deck on the second floor. They don't use the patio on the first floor. They've removed the pool in the past. So we chose that area that lines up with the dining room on the first floor and the master bedroom on the second floor. We would take out the windows and doors that are there, put the elevator in the middle, and then we have a fixed glass or an opening side light on each side on both floors. And I think on the lower level, we have a door. So that's how we chose the area outside. Inconspicuous, number one. It gave us access from both the first floor and the second floor of mobility inside the first floor of being able to get to the elevator. And I've done a number of these in the last few years, all with the elevator company, EHLS. And so we've worked closely with them. So that's how it was chosen. We looked everywhere to put it on the inside, and there was just no place to do it. It's an open foyer. It's from top to bottom. Sometimes you can put them in the crotch of a stair, but then you have to be able to get to a landing. And the way this stair is configured inside the house, there was just no way to do it. So that's how we came up with that solution. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
So, Mr. Chairman, you've heard from Laura, you've heard from Dennis. The standards of review are covered in my letter. I believe they're all met, but Dennis, Laura, and I are all available to answer any questions you or members of the zoning board have.
Thank you. And any questions for Mr. Canning or the applicant or the architect?
I have a question for the architect. This is Riley Pelletin. So I, I understand the, the need for the elevator, and I don't think that is in any dispute at all. You know, many times, people use one of those stairlifts, and so I was wondering if you considered doing that, since that would not require a variance as it would be entirely interior.
To answer your question, yes, we did. One, two things happened. It's the way the stair is constructed. When you get to the lower level on the first floor, it's a platform that's accessible from two sides. There is no railing, and there is no wall. So Mr. Clapman and Laura would have to be able to get up two or three steps to be able to sit on a chairlift, and the chairlift would go up, and it would be impossible on the second floor to maneuver around. So we did look for a chairlift. That was, you know, the first thing you think of, of what's a possibility.
Right. And then the other one is a very simple question, which is the door-
Right. And then the other one is a very simple question, which is the door swing that you have indicated on for the elevator seems odd to me. Seems like you would want it to swing the other way, up against the wall.
No, it's in the center. The elevator is in the center with an equal distance on either side to and there is no wall that goes perpendicular to the elevator. Well, yes, there is on one side. You're right, there is. But as I say, the elevator is going to be in the center so we can have light on both sides.
Right. But we can open it either way. That's a good suggestion. We'll take a look at it.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I can close the testimony and have a motion.
Sure. I'll move to recommend granting a request for a 97.91 square foot or 1.04% lot coverage variation and a 1,135.9 square foot or 12.11% total floor area variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition for an elevator on the legal non-conforming structure at 3140 Wilmette Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
I'll second it.
Pelletin? It's your motion, Mr. Pelletin.
Yes. I just wanted to say, you know, I think that the fact that we have testimony or we have letters from all of the neighbors, that the other possibilities for solving the problem have been explored, and the possibilities for doing it indoors have been ruled out, that this is a, you know, really fairly minimal request, and will solve the problem, and so I can support it.
This is Bob Sermon. I agree with all those comments. As Mr. Kenny had mentioned, at first glance, it appears that it's a large request, but it's due to the change in the zoning code since the building was built, and the request really is minor. And I think they've exhausted all their opportunities, and I think the solution they came up with is a good one with minimal impact. So I can support it.
I would only add to the comments of Mr. Sermon and Mr. Pelletin that it's I would say that as a matter of public policy, it makes sense to encourage longtime residents to continue to reside in the community. And to the extent that physical needs can be accommodated with such a minor request as this, we should be tripping over ourselves to say yes.
I'd like to add, and I think Maria is absolutely right. I think that is what we should be doing. I also think that this is sitting on a or taking the place of a portion of a concrete patio that's not even being used at this point. So normally, when we talk about increasing the size, we're talking about various areas, all that. This does not affect any of that. So I see this as a minor change for a very valuable and good reason.
And this is Chris. I too agree that, yeah, the request is minor, minimalist, and for all the other reasons, I can support it.
I also support if you the incremental ask is 1% of the of the building, total building area, which is the minimalist and all the reasons that have been by other board members I agree with. Before I proceed with the vote, Ms. Roberts, have we heard anything from anyone on this case? I should have done that earlier.
We have not received any comment on this case.
So we can then proceed to a vote, Ms. Roberts?
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. So that is a affirmative recommendation as the board
Thank you.
will meet on October 27th to consider this case.
Thank you very much.
Very much. Thank you.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for zoning Board for Appeals for Case Number 2020-C-32.
Second?
Go ahead, Ms. Roberts, call the vote.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Okay, we can go on to the next case, please.
Our next case is Z30 333 Wilshire Drive West. This is a request for an 8.27-foot front yard setback variation, a 17.6-foot side yard adjoining a street setback variation, and a 237.16 square foot front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a garage addition on the legal non-conforming structure. And the owners and the architect are here.
Welcome all. Please proceed.
Good evening. I'm, let me be heard. I'm Healy Rice. I'm the architect for the project, and I'm here with Jerry and Judy Tatar, who are the owners. We're seeking permission from the zoning board to build a new two-car garage on our existing home. The lot is an unusual shape where the
Wait, 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 wait. I thought this case was, is this the case we're considering next? Ms. Roberts?
Yeah, 333 Wilshire Drive West.
The one earlier was 305.
Okay, maybe, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you had said it was withdrawn. I guess it was not.
305.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ravi.
I was just gonna say, Reinhard, 305, where they wanted to park a recreational vehicle on the property, has been withdrawn. This is just down the street, 333, where they want to build a garage.
Okay, I confused the cases. Sorry, go ahead, please. Sorry.
So we are seeking permission to build a new two-car garage on this legally non-conforming lot. It's an extraordinarily unusual lot with a 94-foot front yard and a 36-foot rear yard. And right now, there is no garage on the property. So we are seeking permission to build a new attached garage that would be adjacent to the kitchen on the front of the house and adjust, modify the driveway, reducing the existing circular driveway to just access the new garage. The new garage would be 20 by 22. We are on the corner of Glenview Road and Wilshire Drive. We did for earlier, the owners sought permission to build a, oopsie, there we go, to go through from Glenview Road and were denied by Illinois Department of Transportation access to be able to build a garage in the rear of the lot. As such, the only conforming location would be behind the house, and you would have to have a driveway that accessed from Wilshire down the side of the property, which would substantially increase the impervious surface. So what we're looking to do is build a new attached garage that would then just be coming off Wilshire instead. The corner setback that's most close to the property line is 2.5 feet, and then it opens up to about 10 feet as you hit the front of the garage. I think for the most part, everything else is outlined in our proposal. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hi.
Go ahead. Sorry, go ahead.
First question I have. Hi, Healy. Is the location the closest point there? When I looked at the property, is that, where is the lot line compared to the fence? Is the fence right on the lot line? Does that, that appeared?
Hang on, I'll have to look on the survey. I'm not sure if it's
It seems to be getting really tight right there. It looks like the fence is within it, so it's almost like it's right up against the fence, that corner.
I think, no, on this old survey, the fence looks like it's beyond the property line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We would be within, inside of that.
Inside, okay. All right. And how do you, how do they propose to use the portion of the garage that's closest to the front door? I mean, you can't, can't really park a car in there. Is the intent to use that maybe as, as storage, the closest part to the main house? Given the driveway, it doesn't seem like you could really pull in there.
We're redoing the driveway. There is an updated site plan from this original one. This, this, and that, that's where the garage or the impervious surface calculation. But the plan is to basically extend the, boy, it's hard to do without being there in person to create more of a parking pad out front here, so you'd be able to pull in and park in this area, correct?
Okay, so what would, is there would exist and it would be added to?
Correct. We would be taking out this other south side of the circular driveway. That would be gone. We would no longer need that.
Okay. Do you have a drawing that shows that? Does that impact the impervious calculation or not?
That's factored into this impervious calculation, into the correct, into what Lisa has in the file.
Okay, I guess I'm a little confused. Is this one the correct one or not?
That is not correct.
Okay, well, I think we would need to see the correct one to be able to make a decision. Is that correct, Lisa, or am I interpreting it wrong?
The, the plans are, you know, approved as presented. I'm looking to see if I have anything that's, that's up to date that I can share.
I have it here, which I know was turned in, but I'd have to see it on the set to you guys, so.
As, I have a question. So, so will you change the curb cut then? Eliminate one and make, move the north one? So it's a straight access to the garage?
We would, no, we would leave the existing north one, and then the curb cut on the south would be eliminated.
So
Let me jump in. Why wouldn't you just straighten the garage right in shortest distance between the garage doors and Wilshire?
There's a tree in the parkway, I believe. We may end up needing to modify that, but I mean, this was really just more for the garage, the intent of the garage for the variance because of setbacks. The initial plan was to create an area that you could pull in and then be able to turn around, because that's the other thing that's difficult there, being able to get out onto Wilshire there.
So these calculations are correct. It's just we don't have a sketch that goes with it.
Correct. I did turn that in, and I guessing it just didn't make it into your file, and I apologize for that, because it was, that was what was, Rachel Randolph had requested that, and that was, and so I did present that to them.
Okay, I guess, this is Bob Sermon again. I guess, you know, looking more at the application, those requests are fairly large. Can you explain, I mean, the front yard you're going to align with the existing house?
Slightly forward, because there are windows in the dining room that we wish to maintain if you look at the north elevation.
Okay, so it's a pretty substantial request. And then the side yard is 17.6, but what is the rationale there that it's, I guess, could you explain that a little bit?
The 32-foot front yard setback is, I'm guessing, the average of the block, and Lisa, maybe you can clarify that. The house right now is 24.94 from the feet, so I'm sure that it was originally 25 feet was the front yard setback. And the only reason we're asking to encroach slightly forward of that is to preserve these windows. The, yeah, there we go. So.
Oh, I see.
So the red is the, would be the driveway and parking area, and then we'd have a new front walk that goes to the front of the house, and this old driveway would be deleted. Great, thank you, guys.
Sorry, Healy, we'll add this to the report.
And if it was the west elevation, or the north elevation, Lisa, that shows the side yard, and that's, it shows the windows on the side.
So the, I guess the hardship is that they don't have a two-car garage, right?
We don't have any garage.
We don't have any garage.
Right.
Because that's a pretty substantial request, too, the 17.6 yard for the 17.6 side yard variation.
The side yard adjoining a street, and you can see as the property angles back, it's get, get reduced smaller and smaller there.
So the hardship really is the shape of the lot?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Rice, do you know the width of the parkway that is along Glenview Road?
I don't have a specific dimension, but looking at the flat, the edge of the pavement is shown on there, and it, I would say, is probably 25 feet. It's, it's quite large.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So I'm still wondering, I want to go back to the question about how you get into the southernmost bay of the garage, even in the drawing that you now have up. You're, either you don't have a whole lot of, or you're saying that the red line, you're almost at the street where you're going to be putting pavement.
Correct.
So go back to my question earlier, and that is, there must not be a tree there. Why wouldn't you just go straight into the garage rather than curving into the garage and then having this large pad as well?
We could do that. This is the property line, though, not the parkway. Jerry, I don't know if you can speak up. I believe there are
In fact Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Jerry Tater, one of the owners of the property, my wife. There is, if you look at the front, the line that is drawn there on the, on the drawing that we just looked at, that is the, where the sidewalk is. So I don't know if you can't see my cursor, but that's a sidewalk. Then there's a sidewalk, and there's a big tree right next to that, the cutout for the driveway. So that's in the parkway. So we'd have to, the tree would be in the way of moving that over at all.
So the tree will now be sitting still in the middle of the pad, that concrete pad that you
No, the tree, as I said, there's a sidewalk.
It's, it's to the right of, it's, it's to the right of the property line.
Correct. The sidewalk, and then a parkway, small parkway, and then the street. And the tree is in that parkway, just a few feet from the driveway, the cutout, what do you call it, the curb cut.
So Brad, if you look at Exhibit 1.3, which is the, the overview, you can see the property line, and then there's the sidewalk, which actually looks like a street, and then there's a parkway, and that's where I believe they're saying that the tree is located, and then comes the street.
Right. There's actually, there's actually two trees in that parkway, one just inside of, just next to each of the two curb cuts.
All right. I appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Okay, I want to expand a little on Brad's comment. You know, it, to me, the driveway looks forced. I mean, really should be one that you pull in straight. To get in the space that's closest to the, to the existing home, if you were to get into a space, it's difficult to even back out. I mean, you really, I'm not sure how you'd do it if there was another car. I mean, and it, and it, I guess, the thing that bothers me about the current one is we're getting more cars parked closer to the street. You know, the idea of the garage is to take the cars off of the street, and now you've got an opportunity to almost park three or four cars in that driveway with a lot of it being adjacent compared to the old driveway. I know you could get a lot of cars, but now they're getting really close to the sidewalk and to the street, and I guess that's concerning to me. So it's the aesthetics, and it's also the flow. I don't know, you know, you can't, you just can't park in that closest space. You'd almost have to have a little bit of a backup area that would extend, it's hard to describe, but, yeah, over in that area, correct. You'd almost have to have an area there to be able to back your car to be able to get out. You'd almost have to have an area there to be able to back your car to be able to get out.
Those must be, this is Ryan Schneider. Those must be very valuable trees. And, and to, to, um, to, to, uh, Bob's point though, uh, there are a lot of configurations like this in the village where you have the garage, two-car garage, and then a two-car kind of driveway directly onto the, onto the street. Um, that's, that's not unusual.
My question, if, if we even came out straight and, and, you know, we certainly can look at that, we'd be still talking about the same amount of paving coming straight out instead. So I mean, it's, we, we haven't finalized driveway, but you know, that, the idea was just that you could pull in and out using the area in front of the garage.
It's, as, as some of the other members have said, that's going to be very difficult. I don't know if you've tried to model that. It's going to be very difficult to get a car in there.
Was any thought given to just limiting it to a one or one and a half car garage?
I guess, yeah, we, we're already over the limits on that side yard setback. So the, to be able to build a two-car garage makes the most sense. Um, the home has limited storage as well and to be able to put, you know, lawn equipment and bicycles, things like that in there. I think the request of a two-car garage, we're, we're well under the square footage limitations. It is a reasonable request.
Lisa, can you, can you opine as to whether, if they build a garage at all, it has to be a two-car garage or not?
Uh, because they don't have any enclosed parking now, uh, they could, um, they're not required to do two enclosed spaces. One would be a plus.
I think this is Bob Sermon and I think it's important if you're going to build a garage to go with a two-car if you can fit it. It makes sense. I mean, that's what the city standard is for the most part. Um, I'm just still concerned about the driveway to make a request of two-hundred-and-thirty-seven square feet of front yard impervious when I think that could be reduced and maybe even eliminated if, uh, if that driveway is laid out differently.
Part of the, um, part of the impervious calculation is actual itself to both the house. The house is a hundred and sixty-two square feet and garage is a hundred and eighty-one square feet of that. So that does eat into this, the, um, you know, what the, the driveway already exceeds the numbers. We're actually, we're, we're kind of playing back and forth with what we already have and, and trying to minimize it. We're happy to look at that. I just, you know, we, we don't have a specific number right yet.
So one issue that we've not discussed that, um, I would like to hear other members of the board comment on is, I got out of my car on Wilshire and then I walked over to Glenview Road and took a look down Glenview Road to try to envision a building that was going to be as close as this building will be to where the sidewalk is along Glenview Road there. And it's really, if you, it, it's the only building that you're going to actually see as you look down Glenview Road. It's going to stick out and block the view down Glenview Road. And maybe that's not important to everybody else, but I was a little bit alarmed at how close this was getting to Glenview Road and be interested in hearing if anybody else had that same, uh, thought.
Hey, I also walked around the, uh, Glenview roadside of the property and, uh, I have to be honest, the impression I had when I was there was that I wasn't that concerned about the side yard setback given the breadth of the parkway along Glenview Road. I, I felt that that serves as, um, an adequate buffer, if you will. And I imagine that Glenview Road could be widened. I'm sure the right-of-way would permit that. Um, but, um, I, I don't have a crystal ball and as I looked at the plans and balanced it against what exists today, um, I, I, I felt that I could support this proposal, uh, even given the magnitude of the side yard setback request.
And Brad, I, I feel the same as, as Maria. However, I, uh, was looking for houses with lots that were similarly shaped. And the, uh, of those four corners, um, the two that were, um, directly across the street on both sides, um, were, were the reverse shape, um, and, um, have garages in the back with access off of, of Glenview Road. And the one that's diagonally across the street, which is the same shape, um, they went the long driveway route along the side of the house. And I, I, I would have to say that, um, while that may allow a reduction in the side yard setback variation request, I think we'd end up with much greater, uh, impervious surface request. And, um, actually the, the property would be less attractive with all that driveway. So I, I'm, I thought that while I was concerned about the, the closeness, the proximity of the, the garage to the, the sidewalk, um, as long as there's a fence there, it will screen it to a certain extent, um, and protect it from passersby. Um, and, um, that this is sort of the best of the possible solutions.
Thank you. Brad, Brad, this is Bob Sermon. I had the same concern as you did. I did find one other home and I don't remember what direction. It was the same side of the street. Maybe a block or two away. But the, I guess the reason that it was, that, that I could accept it was it was almost, i- if the, if the building had, had been that close and paralleled the property line, I'd have an issue with it. But I think because it's a point and it's diminishing away from there, uh, quickly, that's why I didn't have an issue with that.
Thank you all.
Any other questions for the applicant or the architect?
I guess I'm still, I just want to raise, I'm still concerned, you know, the, the, the goal of the zoning board is to, uh, look at the request and see if there's an opportunity to reduce the request or diminish it or reconfigure it or whatever the recommendation would be. And I'm still, uh, bothered by the driveway being as large it is, as it is and the lot coverage. So.
Okay. Um, have we, uh, Ms. Roberts, have we heard, uh, heard from anyone else that wishes to speak in this case?
Uh, I don't believe so, no.
Okay. So.
If I, if I may, uh, make the, um.
Sure.
We, we do want to get rid of the other part. We, um, Ms. Rice mentioned that, of the, of that driveway. So that we are adding back in some of the impervious ground. Uh, so that we, we, you know, we recognize that. We, we wanted to do that too. And that's part of our intent. And that's why it's being constructed the way it is. So we can rip up and take out and, and put soil in and, uh, you know, the, the other part of that driveway.
Would you consider making it smaller than it is now or?
If, you know, I would certainly, I, I'm, I'm not an architect. I certainly.
Sweetie, we're coming up next. So how do we?
We're going to call in. We're going to use the phone number.
Oh, sorry.
When it's, and we're going to call this.
Hello?
Yeah. I'm sorry. I didn't know what that was. Um, I, I'm certainly open to any way that, that minimizes it, that we can get into the garage. I have no problem with that. I certainly, Bob, work with Ms. Rice and try and figure that out. The best for both. I have no problem. We, we love to have green lawns too and, and have it done that way.
Bob, I, I don't know how you would make it more accessible for two cars if you made it smaller.
Well, I'm saying it could just be, almost be a straight-in driveway and that would reduce.
But then it's twenty-two feet across. I, I don't see that as a, a, a significant reduction, if it's any reduction at all. Um, but it may be and I, I willing to accept that the, the, um, as proposed, it's difficult to get in and out of, um, for that one car. Um, but the architect and the owners seem to be interested in, in making it work. Um, I don't know what's involved. Uh, perhaps Lisa can tell us about it, about taking down a tree on the parkway. I think the village would have to agree to that. Certainly not something that the owner can do on their own.
Yeah. I, I can, just one thing that, those are two big, old, beautiful trees. Um, they're very big. They're very wide. Um, part of the good, one of the good things about this is that we, the roots of those big, beautiful trees have, uh, moved some of the driveway and we'll be able to make it look a lot better. Uh, but they're, they're very, very big trees. We're not talking saplings here.
Maybe I misunderstood. So the, so the trees, just to confirm it, maybe, you know, I might be, maybe I heard it wrong. So those trees are outside of where the new garage is if you went straight out. So that's why you can't go straight out. Okay. I didn't, I must've missed that during the meeting.
Yeah. They're in the parkway and, and almost out of that.
Okay. Then I don't have an issue with it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I can, we, not having, uh, no one else is on the call here, uh, so I can close the testimony and ask for most.
Sure. Have we checked to see if there are any, um, online comments or?
I, I asked that. I don't think there are.
Oh, you did? Okay. So I missed that part.
Lisa, confirm please.
Yeah. Uh, yeah. Um, we have received the emails. I don't believe there's anybody, um, else in the meeting. Uh, I think they're here for our last case. So, um, I think we can proceed.
Okay.
I move to recommend granting a request for an eight-point-two-seven-foot front yard setback variation, a seventeen-point-six-foot side yard adjoining a s- street setback variation, and a two-hundred-and-thirty-seven-point-sixteen-square-foot, eight-point-five-two-percent front yard impervious surface coverage variation to permit the construction of a garage addition on the legal non-conforming structure at three-thirty-three Wilshire Drive West in accordance with the plans submitted.
I'll second that.
Okay. And discussion?
Um, I, I said before that the, the size of the parkway on Glenview Road, uh, made me less concerned about, uh, the seventeen-point-six-foot side yard setback variation that is being sought. Um, and honestly, I, I believe that the homeowners are to be applauded for taking the initiative to build a two-car garage. Uh, personally, I, I wouldn't like to live in a house without a garage. Um, and, uh, I'd be in a never-ending fight with my husband over who got the one spot if it were only one. Um, I, I think that this is, uh, um, really, uh, a not very large request, uh, particularly given that, uh, a substantial amount of the front yard impervious surface, uh, is, um, taken by the house and the garage structures themselves. Um, so I can support this application.
Who wants to second? Mister?
Um, not infringing on the set with, uh, direct, um, a- access from Glenview Road. But I understand that IDOT is not in favor of that. And so we have to move on to the, uh, alternative solutions and that this one presents the best alternative. Uh, you know, we've, we've discussed and I, I think I have, I'm very much in agreement with Ms. Urban about the, uh, um, proximity of the corner of the garage um, to the, the property line and the sidewalk and the street. That's all.
Uh, this is Bob Sermon. I concur with, uh, my associates and, um, believe the hardship really is the shape of the lot. And, um, you know, that, that they've looked at other opportunities. It doesn't make sense to, to put the garage in the backyard or anything else. So, um, I think it's a good solution and can support it.
Okay. Any other comments?
No. This is Chris. I too can support it. Um, I think the only other note I had made was that, you know, because it is adjacent to Glenview Road with that white parkway, um, it's not really impairing adjacent properties. So it is a, you know, um, the shape of the parcel and the, you know, the curiosity of the triangular lot that is the hardship. So I can support it.
I can support it as well. Okay. I am, uh, just a quick comment and, uh, it doesn't affect my support of this for the reasons stated, but if, if I draw that, that, uh, drawing that, uh, I think, uh, Ms. Robert showed us as to how much additional paving will be added and what will be taken away. As I look at this, all of the paving except for a walkway to the front door from the, from the driveway, all that paving south of the garage, including the remaining leg of the circular driveway, seems to be, uh, is much greater than what will be added, but, uh, I haven't done the math. So, any case, something to look at.
I too, for all the reasons stated, can support it. So can we call for a vote?
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletson?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. This is a unanimous recommendation and the, uh, this will be heard by the zoning board, by the board of trustees on October twenty-seventh. Thank you all. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
I move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendations for the zoning board of appeals for case number twenty-nineteen dash Z dash thirty.
Second.
Ms. Choka Urban?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Felkoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletson?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes. Thank you. And I guess we can go on to the next case.
Thank you all and I appreciate your concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Our next case is twenty-twenty Z thirty-one, eleven-seventy-four Michigan Avenue. This is a request for a five-point-five-four-foot fence height variation to permit the construction of a six-point-five-foot tall open fence on an existing revetment. And, um, our applicants are all here.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Canning and whoever else, uh, you would like to introduce.
Good evening again, uh, Chairman Schneider, members of the zoning board. Thank you for hearing our matter tonight and visiting the Coachman's home to get a better understanding of the unique situation we have here. I'd also like to thank Lisa for all her work and putting together the packet. Uh, the reason for the size of the packet was to try to give you as much background as possible on, on different projects at this home so that we could focus on a single issue before the zoning board tonight, which is the height variation request. There is no dispute that, uh, Coachman can have a fence and there's no dispute that they can have a fence in this proposed location. I think the important thing to consider is that though this request is born of unique circumstances, it really is no different than anyone else in the village who wants to have a backyard fence at a height of six-point-five feet. In fact, the request is so common and so non-controversial that if you look at the report prepared by Lisa, there are no zoning board cases involving a fence at a rear lot line except two cases involving double frontage lots. And as you know, from being of the property, this is not a double frontage lot. And, and that makes sense because having a backyard fence is the norm in Willmet. Now, according to the staff memo, the Coachmans are seeking a five-point-five-foot-four fence height variation to permit the construction of this fence. And this, this calculation is based on a determination of grade. And grade, as you see from the memo, was calculated from outside the revetment. So at the water's edge. And we believe this determination is confusing because in this particular location where grade can change so dramatically and so quickly from when you measure it based on wave action, water level, the determination grade in that case becomes subjective based on these variables. And the architect, Scott Crowe, believed that the appropriate measure for grade was at the top of the revetment, the flat portion of the revetment, which had been unchanged for all the years that the revetment has been here. So a question like this as to what is the correct interpretation of grade and therefore how it impacts the height of the fence is precisely why we have variation process for you to consider. Not only unique hardship caused by the changes. Not only unique hardship caused by the changes in Lake Michigan, but also from the interpretation of the zoning code as it is applied to this particular fence in this particular location. Now, I think there was a little bit of misinformation about the revetment. I just want to spend a moment on it. This revetment has been there at least 35 years and maybe more than that. But for many of you, you've never seen this revetment because it was covered by sand and the Coachmans had a beach that went out hundreds of yards. So there was never any issue about proceeding back and forth from when there was a Langdon Beach and when Gilson Park was there. So through the pictures that are in the packet, you see how over the years there have been erosion, not just to the Coachman's properties, but properties north and south, and therefore this revetment becomes exposed. So what happens to that? Well, once it's exposed, it becomes something that people now are traversing across, kids are riding bikes across. Kerry Coachman will talk about this in detail, but it becomes a health, safety, and welfare situation where people could harm themselves on the Coachman's revetment. Now, the question before you tonight, as I mentioned, is simply, what height should this fence be? The code permits a 6.5 fence in the rear lot. The facts supporting this application are quite straightforward. We've got a decades-old revetment which has been revealed through erosion and now prevents a safety hazard. The same safety hazard, I must point out, that the City of Evanston addressed earlier this year when they adopted an ordinance barring people from climbing on city-owned revetments. And these are the exact same type of revetments that the Coachmans have. And, and if you take a minute to look at, if you look at the minutes of the City of Evanston discussion, older woman Fleming, who acknowledges she's the mother of teenage sons, fully admits her sons climb under rocks and ignore the no trespassing signs. And in fact, she suggests that the city should use more aggressive fencing. Now, we also know that the village, or excuse me, the Park District has closed access to Langdon, and until recently Elmwood Dunes, and other portions of lakefront. So I ask you, if governments see a concern about access to these revetments, what is a private property owner supposed to do? And I submit, in the packet you see pictures from 90 Kedzie in Evanston where the owner received permission to put a fence across the revetment to keep people off that revetment, which is across from a public park right next to the lake. So as I said, the facts here are pretty straightforward. We've got a revetment that's been exposed. We have an owner who believes that the best way to protect the health, safety, and welfare of his family and his community is to put a fence in this location of this height and the fence that will not impede anyone from crossing in front of the revetment at any time, whether they're sailing, whether they're swimming, whether they're kayaking, whether they're walking with boots on. And candidly, I'm not sure where someone would go because there is no Langdon Beach anymore. So not having a fence in this location will work a hardship on the Coachmans and will con, and their fear is people continue to traverse this revetment and possibly injure themselves on the revetment. So we have a number of people here who would like to speak this evening. The first is going to be Kerry Coachman, who will tell you a little bit about his ownership of the property and the different situations that have developed over the years. We have Dan Schmidt, who is the general contractor, who has submitted a report on the work that was done at the property and can answer questions about the construction techniques to install the fence because in some of the materials from people objecting the fence, they're concerned about the fence toppling into the water. We have Dixon O'Brien, a civil engineer, who is also working on the project at this time, and he's available to address some questions about why it is impractical, in fact, impossible, to put steps across the Coachman's revetment. We have Ron Kope, who introduced himself earlier. Ron prepared a memo as to why the public trust doctrine has absolutely no applicability here in this matter. And then we finally have Tara Coachman, who will talk to you about her experiences living in this property and, and dealing with people who come up on the revetment. So I'm going to toss it over to Kerry, and then Dan will be after that, then Dixon, then Ron, then Tara. And thank you for your time and listening to us this evening.
Mr. Terry, can you hear me okay? Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Kerry Coachman, and I'm present here with my wife Tara. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you this evening, and I also want to thank the members of the board who took the time to come to our home to better understand the situation. Tara and I have lived in Willmette for nearly 25 years. We lived at 2710 Iroquois Road for our first decade. We moved along with our four young sons to 1174 Michigan some 15 years ago. Our home at 1174 is original to the property and close to 100 years old. We understand and respect that the village has an interest in understanding what is transpiring along the lakefront and what actions people are taking in response to rising lake levels. We also understand that the lakefront can be an emotional issue. We are also not blind to the fact that there are some who will find it hard to be sympathetic to those who live on the lake. Please allow me to provide you with the necessary background. When we acquired 1174, the beach house was already built. As some of you may know, the beach house was constructed by the prior owner, the late Scott McKay. At the time of our purchase in 2005, there were eight-foot-high sand dunes in front of the beach house in a long stretch of sandy beach along Lake Michigan. There was a distance of over 300 feet between the lake and the beach house. Prior to closing on 1174, I hired Charlie Shabika to inspect the beachfront. When I walked the property with Charlie, I recall he felt that there was little concern that the lake would ever impact the beach house. On the remote chance a substantial lake rise ever became an issue, I was told that I had options because there was a very old revetment in place under the sands. For the first three years we lived at 1174, the beach retreated and the lake retreated. By the summer of 2014, the lake reached its low point and the beach was at its widest. We had accumulated an additional, easily an additional 350 feet. We had approximately 650 to 700 feet of sand dunes and beach between our home and the lake. It was a very peaceful pastoral setting where people would stroll the waterline. During this period of time, we experienced little to no issue with trespassing. Between our seawall and the lake, our children and friends were able to enjoy a full-size volleyball court located several hundred feet from the shoreline. Things began to change on the shore in the fall of 2014. On October 30th and October 31st, a Halloween storm came straight into the shore and deep into the beach. In one 48-hour period, we lost over 150 feet of beach. During the period of 2015 to 2017, the shoreline continued to experience additional but somewhat gradual erosion. At this time, we still had several hundred feet between the beach house and the lake, and at this time, we did not have any trespassing issues. During late 2017, I observed during a rainstorm that there were large holes of water accumulating in our doom grass. This showed me that some of the land between the lake and the dunes was at a lower level than the lake. This was alarming to me because if the dunes were destroyed, the lake could quickly encroach on our revetment and potentially our beach house. I also observed that during the storms, that the deep blue water stained in the shipping channel offshore was coming closer and closer to shore. Just off our beach, it also became apparent that the standbars and the shallow gradual slope of the shore was disappearing. So in the spring of 2017, we engaged John Shabika to study the situation. John proceeded to obtain all regulatory approvals related to the repair of our unique pre-existing enclosed revetment. By April of 2018, we contracted with Gillon to undertake revetment repairs. At the time of the repair, other than the front-facing toes and stones, the entire revetment remained concealed under six-plus feet of sand. We contracted with Gillon to restore and return all surface conditions to the pre-repair conditions. We also hired Vertog Landscaping to completely restore the doom grass and native plantings. You will note that in the materials we submitted that there are photographs that demonstrate the consistency of the pre- and post-repair surface and grade condition. At the conclusion of the project, the village itself was also on-site to confirm that we returned everything to pre-grade conditions. A few months post-repair, the incursion waters began to cover the 80 or 80 feet or so of sandy beach in front of the revetment. For the first time, large numbers of people ignored our posted no trespassing sign and started crossing over the sand-covered revetment. Numerous trespassers took the opportunity to verbally harass us as we sat in our beach house. Some claimed that we were responsible for the destruction of the beach. Many of them became agitated when we tried to explain to them that they were trespassing on private property. By the time 2018 ended, Willmette had experienced one of the top five wettest years on record. You may recall that Willmette received nearly 50 inches of rain. Then came January 11th of 2019. On January 11th, we experienced a truly devastating storm. This storm produced recorded waves of 20 feet in height. Many of these waves came straight onshore. Even there was no sandbar and there was no longer a gradual slope to the lake bottom, these waves hit our shoreline with tremendous energy. These giant waves overtopped our revetment. This is the same storm that destroyed what little remained of Langdon Beach and the lakefront access at Langdon. In the first hours, the January 11th storm stripped away virtually all of our sand and plantings that we had restored. In the ensuing hours, the waves overtopped our revetment and flooded up against the garage door entrance to our beach house, putting water in the beach house. The standing water against the front door of the garage was in excess of three feet high. Here too, we have submitted photographic evidence of the storm and the storm damage. We are fortunate that the north side of our beach house is protected by a 75-foot-long steel-clad seawall. From photos we have reviewed with Shabika and Antidukes, we know that the seawall is at least 50 years old. The revetment itself may be that old as well. Prior to the storm, the seawall was completely buried under sand. After the storm, a 50-foot length of the seawall was left exposed. At the eastern part, it was exposed to a depth of at least eight feet. So to express the magnitude of this one storm, it removed a volume of sand in one location that was eight feet high and 50 feet long. In the wake of the damage, I convened a meeting with Shabika and Gillon. At this time, I also retained Dixon O'Brien and Associates, who's present tonight, for soil testing and soil engineering. I retained Antidukes for shoreline engineering. I retained Jim Kirk for structural engineering. I retained Tom Schaper and Scott Crowe as architects, and I retained Dan Schmidt of H&amp;S Buildings. All of us met several times. We considered each and every and all possibility. We were confronted with the reality that more than one acre of land, more than 90% of the land that once protected the beach house was gone. Lake Michigan was now within feet of the northeast corner of our beach house. The only solution was to bunker the garage and reseal a portion of the 50-year-old seawall that was removed by prior owners to create access to the beach house garage. The project involved the use of canton piles that were poured into the clay lake bed some 45 feet down to prevent waves from undermining the beach house foundation. Our engineers and architects were also concerned that the north face of the beach house was now completely exposed to wind and storms and possible wave action. Upon examination of the 1998 construction plans and upon inspection of the beach house, Tara and I learned that it was built to the 1998 Willmette Code for table land. It was not structurally expected to withstand the new load factors that the newly unprotected shoreline conditions were creating. We were advised to reinforce the beach house to 80 mile-an-hour hurricane standards. We applied for and were issued permits from the village for all this work, and the construction work is now in its final phase. All of our actions, each and every action we've undertaken has been to preserve the beach house. Our work is finishing none too soon. 2019 was the third highest Willmette precipitation record. Today, Lake Michigan is entering the peak winter storm season at all-time record lake levels. Given the trespassing we experienced and our concerns with the dangers presented by the jagged revetment stones, we knew we needed a fence. Then the Evanston ordinance caught our attention. It was at this time that we learned about crushing injuries and deaths that can occur as people try to walk across revetments. As you may be aware, and as Chris mentioned, three months ago, Evanston enacted an ordinance prohibiting people from climbing on all public revetments. Meetings that were held also served as notice to many private owners to fence their revetments. While Willmette has not yet enacted a similar ordinance, the same issues apply tonight to our situation. Bear in mind, just two months ago, I ran down to the beach in horror on seeing a young teenager using his mountain bike to jump from revetment stone to revetment stone. For my meetings with fence installers and contractors, I learned that it was not feasible to fence outside the revetment due to waves. Moreover, building a fence around the event, the revetment, would impede the public from walking in the water in front of the revetment, which we'd never want to do. What was evident to all our contractors is that the fence should be placed at the flattish top of the revetment. This also has the added benefit to all neighbors of moving the fence nine feet inward on the north and south side from our current fence, which sits one foot inside our property line. This equates, obviously, to putting the fence 10 feet inside our property line. Let me point out that the fence cannot serve its intended purpose if placed in the revetment. That is because this option will not deter or prevent trespassers from attempting to climb up on the revetment. There are pictures in the packet that illustrate this point. The fence we intend to construct is similar to our existing wrought iron fence in height. However, we will expand the distance between the slats so that the fence is more open. We will exclude the spike that exists on our current fence. Therefore, the proposed fence will preserve the ability to look through it while guiding people away from trespassing across our property. So in early August, when we filed for our permit, we were surprised to hear through our architect that the village insisted that we need a variance to put a fence of this height in its intended location. Mr. Chairman, there's been a little discussion about a blue line that was recommended by the village. If you want me to speak to why that's a nonsensical line, I can do that now or I can pass by?
Sure. Please proceed.
Without visiting the site with me, the village proceeded to send back an illustration of what they felt was the outer limit of where I was allowed to place the fence. Let me summarize for you the recommended placement of the fence. The village was suggesting that I move my fence inside my property line by approximately 25 feet or more on either side. Generally, it suggests that Willmette residents are not allowed to fence more than 50% of the furthest, 20% of their rear yard. So that caused us quite a surprise. More specific to our situation, the proposal had multiple negative consequences. First, on the south side of the property, it renders the eastmost service gate unconnected and outside the fence we proposed. Our proposal enabled access to the proposed gate through the existing double gate. And that would be, I don't know that that's clearly spelled out, but that would be at the far right of the screen that you're looking for where the blue line is. The gate is to the right of that, and therefore the gate access would not be used. The village-proposed fence placement was so far inside our property line that it's not even north of my beach house. In fact, the village-recommended fence intersects the middle of the front east-facing window of the beach house. As odd as that may seem, this also renders the northeast door unsafe. This is a door that was approved just four months ago by the village as part of the beach house structural reinforcement. The window is being installed and the doors next week. The suggestion by the village to put the fence within the revetment itself does not deter the problem we are solving for. Instead, it increased the danger by attracting people to try to jump the fence from the top of the revetment to gain access to our property. The proposal exerts surrogacy to risk the bodily harm. The placement of the fence inside the revetment also creates yet another issue. The placement creates an unprotected drop of eight to 10 feet when someone exits the north door of the beach house. At a minimum, it would seem, given the height of the bunker roof, that we would need a guardrail of at least five feet, four feet at a minimum, in height by the north side door to prevent a dangerous fall onto the jagged rocks below. This happens to be the exact location where we are proposing. This happens to be the exact location where we are proposing to put the fence. Scott Crowe Schaefer, architect, point office rainfall from the affidavit that was submitted by him. We are here tonight on what seems, you can put down that unless the board itself wants us to remain off.
Yeah, please.
Here tonight on what seems to.
Sorry, please leave the drawing up if you can.
We're here tonight on what seems to me to be a misplaced interpretation of the term grade. When you look at Womet shoreline, I will suggest to you that you can best understand what is happening by focusing on two terms: uneroded grade and grade in flux. Our revetment height is the height of uneroded grade. The facts clearly demonstrate that our revetment was designed for the retention and preservation of the pre-existing land of 1174 Michigan. The shoreline adjacent to and outside the revetment is grade in flux. If you look up the term adjacent, it's defined as something that is most proximate. The six-foot-wide plateau of the revetment is what is proximate. So under the plain reading and meaning of the village code, it is crystal clear to me that there's nothing preventing someone in our situation from fencing their backyard exactly in the way we see. The six-foot-wide level surface upon which I propose to place our fence has been its exact location for at least thirty-five years, probably more than fifty. Unlike some suggests, the footprint of the revetment was never changed. This was confirmed by Shabika, also confirmed by Gillan, who used GPS and laser sighting to confirm the rebuild was within all previous specification. Shabika has submitted a letter confirming this. Sand and water constantly move up and down, I'll call it ten feet. The only thing that is stable is the height of the revetment. It's the only measure that makes sense. I refer you again to the Schaefer architect's exhibition. Scott Crowe makes clear that he's baffled by our permit holdup. He states in no uncertain terms that in his professional opinion, quote unquote, "The six-point-five-foot fence that was requested was in keeping with the, quote, 'sensible' reading of the code." He also notes that the village suggested fence location, ironically, is at virtually the identical grade that we are suggesting. He notes that any difference is likely six inches, certainly less than a foot. So far in my shoreline protection process, I've dealt with less, no less, no less than a dozen different governmental agencies at the federal, state, and village level. This includes the federal and state EPAs, the Army Corps of Engineers, our local water reclamation district, just to name a few. Every aspect of our shoreline protection project complies with every law and every regulation. So it comes as a shock to me and my wife that the only action that any governmental entity wants me to defend is the one which directly impacts the health and safety of both the public and my family. We hope that after hearing this appeal, that this board will approve the variance and allow us to take a sensible and reasonable action of installing the proposed fence. The fence will provide an attractive, a protection against an attractive nuisance to trespassing children and adults. I have supported numerous conservation and preservation projects during the course of my lifetime. My support both individually and through my long-term involvement at the Shed Aquarium, where I served for more than a dozen years as a trustee. As much as some would like to confuse the issue, this is not an open lands issue. This is a trespass issue, this is a backyard issue, this is a safety issue. More, you know, and nobody, please, nobody should think for a moment that we enjoy having to fence our property. In fact, I'm likely the person who dislikes the option more than anyone. I look forward to the day when the lake recedes, the dunes return, and we can watch as we did for many years, people walking peacefully along the shoreline. Of course, including my comments, let me mention that our second, that the second most impacted set of individuals in home is immediately south of ours and has a beach house very close to the proposed south fence. The owners of this property, Randy Kretschmark and Carol Berman, have submitted a letter, which is in the package, in full support of our plan. They are not alone. Over thirty other letters were submitted from Womet residents in support of our appeal. Thank you for listening to me, and I'm available to answer any questions or clarifications you might have.
Please, just a quick question on that drawing. Is the blue line on 1.9, is that the village suggested location of the fence? It seems odd.
Yes, it is. It is odd, and it is their suggestion.
But I mean, it is not a simple shape, literally, they would like to follow this. This is more irregular shape.
Reinhardt, that's just the inside of the line of the revetment?
That's what I thought. Where is the suggested village location?
It's the blue line shown on the screen right now.
I thought you said it was just the edge of the revetment, the inside edge of the.
Lisa, if I could answer that question. That line is just showing at the point that we would measure from the grade under the fence off the revetment. We're not recommending a fence in that location. That is the ground off of the revetment at what point we would measure the height of the fence from the ground under the fence.
So what was the village's recommendation?
We, I mean, we're not recommending a location for the fence. What we were doing is pointing out that that blue line is off the revetment. The revetment being the rise of the natural grade of the land underneath it. That's what we were pointing out, that that is the point in which we would measure the grade under the fence at that point in. But we, the village is not recommending a location for a fence. We're just pointing out where we would measure grade from.
Well, if I could weigh in on that, because according to the packet, where grade is being measured from is not the blue line or the red line, but outside of the revetment on the water side.
Correct. That's when you're putting it on the revetment, which again, when village engineer and staff looked at it, the revetment's a raising of the natural grade of that area there. We thought it reasonable to allow the fence and to measure underneath the fence off the revetment on the owner, the inside of the revetment. I guess the way, if you go back to prior to the revetment being installed, you could look down the lakefront, and you could see where a couple of the revetments have been installed. You see a grade, you see a revetment, which is an artificial change in the height with the revetment. Then you go on the other side, you see the grade of the beach. Like three or four houses down, there's another revetment. So again, what the village was saying is, the revetment, if you go off the revetment, we're going to take a look at the neighbor inside of the revetment for where we measure that height. If you go inside of the revetment onto what is the Kochman property, we will go off the grade underneath the fence.
Mr. Kochman, I have a question. When I visited with you and your property, you stressed also not just the how dangerous it would be for trespassers, but also security issues relative to your using the beach house in an undisturbed way. You did not mention that in your presentation today, that issue.
Yeah, I thank you for raising it. You know, my wife, I think, will address some of that. But it is very disconcerting to be sitting on the beach house with the door open and to have people pop up within feet of that window. That's raised in several of the letters that it. And yes, you know, we've had people engage us in confrontational ways as they've come by the front door of the beach house. They have an ability to walk right into the beach house. They have an ability to walk right into our property main house. So yes, it's of great concern, and I don't believe that, and I'll let Tara speak for herself, that she feels comfortable being in that location at night, given the amount of trespass that we're experiencing. Again, this is our backyard.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I want to turn it over then to Dan Schmidt. He has submitted a letter describing in general the work that's been done on the property. But some questions have arose as to how a fence would be affixed on the revetment. And Dan, if you could briefly inform the board about what the techniques are for affixing a fence.
Hello, everybody. As I said, my name is Dan Schmidt with SH Builders. I've worked for the Coachmans on a lot for the past fifteen years. I've worked in Womet for the past thirty-five years. And I'm here tonight to answer any questions you may have regarding the construction of the fence on the revetment.
But in short, Dan, could you take us through how you propose to affix it to the revetment?
Absolutely. So you saw evidence of the, or photos of the current fence that the Coachmans have. So it'd be the same style wrought iron fence. We would have three-inch posts cored into the concrete, set into epoxy with a steel flange around those posts that is then bolted into the granite for additional support. All the fence will be welded together, and it will be a continuous U-shaped fence, which gives it more stability.
And Dan, in your opinion, would a fence like that be able to withstand the storms? Or would it, as some of the letters have suggested, would it topple into the lake?
I feel it will be able to withstand the storms, and with the addition of the flange, even more so.
Okay. And Dan, you've been involved in all the shoreline protection work that's gone on in 2020. You're available to answer any questions about that as well?
Correct. We've been doing the concrete retaining walls to close off the gap in the existing seawall at the lower level of the Coachman's beach house.
Okay, so Chairman Schneider, I don't know if you or any members of the board have any questions at this time about the construction of the fence.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So you're saying the rocks into which these defense will be sealed into, that those rocks will not move over time?
Talking, consulting with the engineers, the top largest revetment stone that has a flat surface on it, that's a fairly stable rock, and would be cored into that to set the fence post into it.
Thank you.
Then there's, yeah, then there's other means we can do to stabilize it if needed as well. We could put angle braces on the back of it if needed.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Canning.
Okay, if there is no other questions, Dan, if you could stick around in case some come up later. Next, I'd ask Dixon O'Brien to jump in.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for letting me speak. So we are constructing the tangent pile walls along the, we installed them in front of, for the bunker foundation, and we're installing them along the north and south walls, north and south sides of the property. The tangent pile, if you're not aware, is a series of closely spaced piles that are then filled with cement or concrete. And then the space between the piles is grouted to create an impermeable wall that will protect the property from the wave action. So we're in the process of doing that. And I know there was a comment about a pass-through or a walk-through or some kind of access through the revetment, and it's just not possible. I mean, you can't, you couldn't do that without destroying the revetment or the integrity of the revetment, so it's really not a viable option, so.
Could you go into a little more detail about that, Dixon? Putting aside any regulatory concerns IDNR EPA would have, but just from the structural integrity of the revetment, the bunker and the boathouse, why is such a suggestion like that problematic?
Sure. I mean, first of all, assuming that you didn't want to like extend it out two hundred feet on either side of the property so you could get steps going up, and you somehow tried to make the steps into the revetment, you would have to pull out some of the revetment stones. And once you pulled out, you'd have to go towards the bottom of the revetment. And once you pulled out the bottom of the, one of the bottom stones to kind of start building the steps, it's, I don't know, what's that game where you try and stack the tubes up, and you pull one out and they all come tumbling down? Well, that's essentially what you would be doing. You just, it would destroy, the revetment would no longer work, and you couldn't rebuild it. Because it was, it's, it's just, it's the way it's built, it's just, it needs to stay the way it is, which is one of the reasons why it's solid and firm. And going back to the fence, the rocks will not move. They will stay where they are because they've been there for a long time, and they're solid. So it's, it's just, it's really not a practical or realistic option.
Mr. Canning, I have another question for Mr. Schmidt. Is that possible?
Please.
Mr. Schmidt, I visited that area today, and I was walking up from Elmwood Park or Beach. And the third house north of Elmwood Beach, there were some contractors there at the edge. And they were talking to, there is, it happens to be a deck and a kind of a structure, which may be a beach house, very close to the, sort of a wood piling thing, and then a few rocks. And I said, and to the north of that immediately is a massive revetment, even bigger than what we're talking about here. I think you may know what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And they said, the contractors, I asked, are you going to do the same thing as what has happened directly north of you? And they said, no, because it is so difficult, almost impossible, to get permits for a new revetment. Can anybody enlighten me on that?
I can't. Maybe Dixon or Kerry can for permits on revetments.
Let me, I'm not the permit shoreline expert, but I do know that there, there's a long involved process to get the permits, particularly when they're, the, like, the revetments that you noticed further south where it looks like they're putting them out in the water. So there's a process involved, and so they're not impossible to get, they just take a lot of time. And the other issue is, there's so many people doing revetments up and down the lake right now that the contractors are all booked up for the year doing revetments. So it may be that they're just so busy, and it's not that it's hard to get a permit, it's hard to get a contractor to do the work.
So then I asked, I asked them, so what are you going to do? Well, we're going to put a few boulders on the edge of that wooden structure. And I said, isn't, aren't the waves, a strong storm, and they go up to the deck and into the beach house? And he said, yeah, probably will. So these particular owners intend to let happen what happens without doing a major. Anyway, I just wanted to, I thought they said that to go through all the approval steps on a new revetment on Lake Michigan is almost impossible, but maybe it is not. It just takes a long time.
No, no, you can get a, you can get a permit. It's just, it's, it just, you have to, there's rules that have to be followed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Canning.
Chairman Schneider, one minute. Kerry, can you address how long it took you to get a permit just to restore and repair the revetment?
Yeah, as a grandfather pre-existing revetment, I would say that we spent the better part of ten months confirming that we have the ability and rights to rebuild within the existing framework portions of the revetment. So I think the legal process alone was ten months. That's not including, you know, the contracting and getting somebody with lead time to work. I would, I would guess that from start to finish, the construction of a new revetment in this moment, if you can obtain the permitting, is a twenty-four-month plus period. And I believe that that sounds in question, that you're speaking to your souls, and that the new owner may have done that installation to try to have an interim defense on that structure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this is Bob Serman. Could I ask a question? I have a question for Mr. O'Brien. I just wanted to clarify your work. Are you putting in additional pilings? I just wanted to clarify your work. Are you, are you putting in additional pilings for the project?
Yes, along the north and south properties, we're putting tangent piles to protect the property against, if the lake were to rise, say another foot or another half a foot, and there would be further erosion, it would protect the property from erosion. I think if you look at the properties on either side, you can see that significant erosion has occurred. And so what we're doing is installing a system that will protect Kerry's property.
That would start from the revetment and then go west.
It goes, yes.
Let me clarify if I may. The tangent piles along the side of the house begin behind our existing east seawall to protect both sides of the property. The question was addressed to Antidute, which is what is the foreseeable risk of continued erosion? And those tangent piles protect our pool from sliding into Lake Michigan. The recommendation that a foot to two foot incremental rise in Lake Michigan is foreseeable. So that combined with the type of waves that are coming in, we wanted to retain not just the beach house, but the rest of the backyard further west.
So if I understand it correctly, the tangent piles do nothing to secure or improve the durability of the revetment itself?
That's correct. And then I think an important point here is that the tangent piles and the bunker that's installed to buttress the waves from damaging the beach house. If you will, the tangent pile, Dixon did tangent piles on both sides, but also in front of the beach house to serve the the foundation for the bunker. It was determined that the sitting in sand that you can't excavate, you can't pound even by the core steel down. You have to drill gently down into the lake bed to create a foundation. That whole construction of that tangent pile and bunker was engineered, engineered depended upon the revetment buffering first line of defense against the waves. It is an integral shoreline system. If you remove and breach the revetment, you've put all the other engineering at risk.
So to clarify, you have the revetment, then you've got a retaining wall and then the rest of the property.
Correct.
So the retaining wall was there years and years ago, and that was the first line of defense. And at some point, the revetment was added as an additional line of defense. And now you're just saying from the top of the of the revetment, you just want to have a fence that's six and a half feet tall?
Correct.
That's really simplified. That's all it really is.
You got it.
And then the reason, the reason that it's set in slightly on the north and south, is that because of side yard setbacks or something? Is that the reason for that little?
It's a great question. The way that the the revetment was constructed at least thirty-five plus years ago, it slopes up from property line nine feet up and then goes to a flat surface. The middle of the flat surface, as Dixon pointed out, are is constructed of some of the biggest stones. Some of them are six ton stones in the middle and they're flat. And that's the place upon which to place it, that's six foot width. If we placed it outside, you'd have a very uneven surface gapping people to climb under.
So it almost peaks towards that plateaued area in the center?
Exactly.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Sermon, to that point, again, when we're trying to figure out where to figure out what the grade is and where to site defenses, that that flat plateau is what the architects cited the fence on. So that's how it was chosen.
Which to me, you know, I'd like to hear obviously the rest of the case, but to me, it makes a lot of sense that that would be the height. And if the the owner decides to walk out there on their own, it's a six and a half foot fence, just like you would have if you walked in any other backyard.
Exactly.
And it wouldn't make sense to, you know, to measure it from a lower level. So. Okay, thank you for the clarification. I'll let you continue.
Chairman Schneider, do you have any questions for Dixon O'Brien?
No, I'm good. I don't know if any other board member has questions.
Dixon, don't go anywhere. I'm going to turn it over to Ron Kope. Mr. Kope is the Coachman's Land Use Council. You heard a little bit from him earlier, but within the materials that we saw in the packet over the weekend, there were a number of questions and comments about public trust doctrine. There's an article by Henry Rose, a professor at Loyola University School of Law. I asked Ron to look at this issue based on his expertise. He's prepared a letter in in your packet. But Ron, if you could introduce yourself to the zoning board and summarize your findings.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
I'm like last time, yes.
This is, this is an improvement over my first adventure into this. So I don't want to take up a lot of your time. I think the important information you've already gathered regarding the issue of building a six and a half foot tall fence where it's to be located and the practicality of doing it. What happened here is you've been inundated with letters and and arguments, some of which make absolutely no sense. And part of it is a legal argument involving something called the public trust in Illinois. Let me just say in brief, that is a red herring. It has nothing to do with the issue of the six and a half foot fence. It's an effort to not allow any fencing to be built on this property. And it's, it's based on an opinion that does not follow either the United States Supreme Court rulings or the Illinois Supreme Court rulings. In in simple terms, the issue has to do with where does the public have access? And under the Old English common law, the land beneath the seabed was held by the sovereign in trust for public navigation and fishing. So you couldn't block off people from rowing their boats or going fishing. And later, the Illinois Supreme Court held that in regard to Illinois, the boundary of the submerged lands, which were held in public trust, was the water's edge. That is where you might walk, if you pictured yourself walking along the sand where the water just creeps up onto the sand, that's the water's edge. The Illinois Supreme Court held clearly in a case called Seaman versus Smith, going back to eighteen sixty, that the issue is where the water usually stands as water's edge line. And so the public has access to the water's edge. The Coachmans have no intention of preventing people from walking along the water's edge if and when the water recedes. And this fence would not preclude them from walking along the water's edge. They've raised an argument that relates to decision in Michigan, a law review article by this Mr. Rose about the high watermark. It has nothing to do with us or with Illinois. It's it's a red herring. And so rather than going deep into the woods on this issue, that the law here in regard to the public trust doctrine does not in any way, shape or form preclude the Coachmans from being able to build the fence. They want to build the fence. In fact, this is a common sense issue as opposed to some deep legal issue. And I, at that point, or at this point, I don't really think there's much, there's anything more I need to say. If and when objectors decide to raise questions or if they want to question me, I'm I'm available. I enjoy questions. And in this regard, I think I'm just uselessly taking up your time. I think you've already got the sense of what needs to be done here in regard to letting them go ahead and build the fence. I would just add one other thing. The Coachmans have been absolutely fastidious in getting every legal approval that they need to go every inch of the way in regard to the work that they're doing on their property. There are numerous legal entities, including the Army Corps, the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, the Environmental Protect, all of these agencies have approved what they're doing. And so you can take it for granted that they've looked at every aspect of this before they said, go ahead and do it. So with that, I'm going to conclude.
I have a question. So just to confirm, sir, the public has no legal right to access the top of that revetment. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kope? Okay, if not, I'll kick it over to Tara Coachman.
Sorry, I was muted. Hi, first of all, I want to thank you all. I'm very appreciative of your time and I'm going to be as brief as I possibly can. You've heard that we've lived in Willmet for twenty-five years and the last fifteen years we've lived at eleven seventy-four. For the vast majority of our time in this home, we have had no issues. However, when we first moved into this home, it had been unoccupied for approximately eighteen months. And during the course of that eighteen months, local teenagers became aware of that situation and had turned the area right outside our beach house into an area where they were holding parties. So it was a pretty regular occurrence that when I would take my four young sons at the time down to play on the little sandy area in our backyard, I would have to first go down and clean up beer bottles, cigarettes. I'm sorry to say, on more occasions than I care to remember, used condoms. And I would have to do that before my children were able to play in my backyard. I thought those days were long gone. However, as the lake has come closer, we've had teenagers once again partying in the area right outside our beach house doors. They've woken us up many nights. We've had to go down in the middle of the night and ask them to leave. And I'm sure nobody wants to have teenagers, especially teenagers they don't even know, partying in their backyards. It's exacerbated by the fact and the revetment. And on any given night, I am afraid that someone will injure themselves or even fall into the lake at night. So that's not fun. In addition to the teenagers, we've also been harassed and accosted by people trying to walk across our property within feet of us sitting on our deck and verbally accosting us, telling us that we have ruined the beach. That they have every right to walk across our property. This has happened when we're alone and when we've had family over, when we've been with friends. It's alarming. It's uncomfortable. It's, it's it's very uncomfortable. I can't feel that I can go down and enjoy myself and be safe in my own backyard all the time. Also, I'm puzzled by the argument that a few people have raised that somehow our fence will impede their ability to walk the length of the beach. Once you get north of our property, there's very little beach left. The park district recognized the dangers of the rising lake levels and closed off access to Langdon Beach. Langdon Beach doesn't exist anymore. It's underwater. There's a very, very small area of private beaches. There are four homes to our north, not all of which have beach access. So once people get, they trespass over our revetment, they get to the other side and they see there's nowhere left to go. There's no way to get back up to Michigan Avenue or Sheridan Road because Langdon is closed. So they have to turn right around, recline the revetment and trespass once again over our property. I'm also rather alarmed by the handful of people who think that we, by putting a fence on our own property, are trying to take something from the public and trying to take public property. We're not doing that at all. The fence will be on our property in our backyard. We will not put a fence on public property. We would never do that. I also appreciate the fact that the village has recognized that we have the right to put a fence on the rear of our property. And I hope that you'll agree that that fence should be at a height that will prevent people from climbing the revetment and that will prevent them from jumping over the fence and entering our backyard. I also hope that you'll agree that it should be in a location that is practical and achieves its purposes. One of the things I've loved about living in our home and living in Willmet has been seeing people enjoying the beach. I often run into old friends who are walking the beach. I strike up conversations with new acquaintances. I hope as much as anybody that the lake levels will drop as quickly as they rose. And once again, everybody will be able to walk in front of the revetment on a large expanse of sand. That is my hope. However, I hope feel that we need to do what we can at this moment to prevent, protect the public from harm and to protect the security of our home and of my family. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Canning?
We have no further witnesses right now, but I would ask Ms. Roberts if there's anyone else who wants to speak in favor of the application.
You know, I don't know. If, I guess we'll just ask if there's anybody in the meeting that wants to speak up to do so. Otherwise, we've got a couple of folks who want to speak in opposition and I've got a plan for that.
Lisa, my name's Sean Tracy. I was hoping to speak in support of the Coachmans, please.
I think the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Hi, thanks for everyone's time. I'll be brief. My name's Sean Tracy. I've lived as a resident of Willmet for over twenty years, living in eighteen ten Elmwood Avenue. I've known the Coachman family for over fifteen years as their children and mine overlap in age. Regarding the character of these people, they are exemplary residents of this wonderful community, raising their four young boys into wonderful young men. Kerry and Tara attended, had their kids attend our public schools. They were involved in every single extracurricular from baseball to hockey that you can think of. They are the least pretentious people I can, I've ever known. To hear this issue of people climbing onto their land, expressing obscenities, abusing their property, invading their home with no remorse is very disturbing. Up and down that stretch of beach between Gilson Beach and Langdon Park, our fence is previously installed, preventing people from walking the receding beachfront. I would ask the zoning board to consider the big picture here. The Coachmans did not raise the water level of the lake. They're not trying to protect, they're trying to protect the property in the exact same way other homeowners around them have already done. It is a shame the beaches eroded, but the people driving the dissension on this issue seem to be motivated by personal vendettas or something other than common sense. Please allow these outstanding Willmet residents who simply want to build a fence on their land and prevent people from hurting themselves to be allowed to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anybody else?
Yes, I would also like to speak on behalf of the Coachmans. Number one, my name is Paul DeGrandis. I live at five fifteen Eighth Street. And I have been a resident of Willmet for twenty-three years. I support the Coachman's fence variance application and like Mr. Tracy, can speak to the character of the Coachman family. Without question, when you talk to Kerry and Tara, the diligence that they put in to doing things right is beyond what any normal human would do. And I couldn't even imagine the investment they had to do to do that as well. But aside from knowing them personally, I'm also a Dog Beach and a Saving Beach Pass holder for years and very active on the Willmet lakefront from the harbor all the way to the north end. And when you look at the Willmet lakefront in total, there's a precedence that has been placed that safety first. When you look at the twenty-five years ago, you could climb on the rocks down the Dog Beach. Now you can't climb on the rocks for safety reasons. There's a clearly roped off swimming area at Gilson Beach for the safety of the swimmers. Very clear for safety. There is also strict enforcement of paddleboard launch and swimming at Sailing Beach, at the Sailing Beach. So it's very clear all along that stretch of the Willmet lakefront that safety is paramount and it should be. We all know the water is beautiful, but not everyone realizes how dangerous it is. So because of this new water level, the foot traffic has now been pushed along the very dangerous rocky revetment and all of the zoning board members you visited, you see it's it's treacherous at best. And now the bold are walking through the Coachman's property. Pretty unacceptable from my standpoint. But the the major component from my standpoint is the nighttime traffic and trespassing. It is a bit out of hand. We've witnessed it. It is not safe and candidly, I wouldn't want that for my family or any family in Willmet. That's not why we live here in Willmet. So that risk is just as great. When and if the lake water recedes and safe passage for walkers would naturally return, we hope for that. But until then, I believe this variance needs to be But until then, I believe this variance needs to be permitted out of the safety for all parties. We live in here in Willmett for a lot of very good reasons and safety is one of them. And the Coachmans deserve it just like everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. DeGrandis. Ms. Roberts, how do we, how do we, in what order do we let people speak on this topic?
The applicant was asking for those speaking in favor, so that's how we got there.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wants to speak in favor?
Okay, if there's no one else, we would reserve time for rebuttal and will pass to whoever wants to speak next in opposition.
Absolutely, you will, you will have time to, for the last word, in other words. Go ahead.
And Mr. Chairman, we have someone representing a couple of people. Peter Bauger, if you would like to go next, sir, we're ready for you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Roberts, can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name is Peter Bauger, B-A-U-G-H-E-R. For 40 years, I was a Willmett resident and a neighbor of the Coachmans. I'm here tonight, though, representing and speaking on behalf of the Coachman's immediate neighbor to the north, Susan Antarik, T-A-R-E-K, Susan Antarik Elmasri. They live at 1204 Michigan Avenue. They are the immediate north neighbors. So when you heard about walls being built and fences going up and boulders being put in, it is immediately adjacent to their property. And when you were told by several speakers, including Mr. Coachman, that he has been fastidious in following all rules and all requirements for notice, that is expressly not correct with respect to his north neighbors who he joins, Susan and Tara Antarik Elmasri, who have been given as little information as late as possible at every point during the last two years. Now, why do I refer to two years? Mr. Coachman gave a brief summary of that, but the circumstance of this property in the last two years has been one of continuous construction and it's new construction. In 2019, barge, multiple barges brought in huge new granite boulders. There is no boulder in the current revetment wall that was not placed there in 2019. It is correct that there was an old revetment wall that was made of a softer stone that broke up over the years. It also, because the stone was not placed on clay, it also sunk down into the sand. But every part of the revetment that is there now was placed there by barge after barge after barge with huge granite blocks being put in. But unfortunately for the Coachmans and for everyone else, that construction which took up the entire summer and into the fall of 2019, that failed as Mr. Coachman essentially conceded when there were new storms and a higher lake level in 2020. And you've heard from a battery of consultants and contractors about new work that was then undertaken in late 2019 and throughout 2020, which is still continuing. Mr. Schmidt and Mr. O'Brien, who you heard from a few minutes ago, are still working on this tangent wall, which is a new seawall in front of the old, what was a boathouse. But unfortunately for everyone, the use of that as a boathouse has now ceased because the boathouse door, which was the entry point for wave runners and sailboats and other lake equipment, has now been sealed off. And it's been sealed off because Mr. Coachman and Mrs. Coachman have decided that in order to protect what was a boathouse, but no longer functions as a boathouse, in order to do that, they would wall that off with a new seawall. Now, in addition to that work, which has gone on with heavy equipment and barges and new granite and new concrete walls, for the, for all of 2019 and all of 2020, entirely at the direction of the Coachmans and their succession of architects and engineers and consultants, entirely under their control and with no pushback from the village of Willmett or its community development department. In addition to all of that, there was a center section within the revetment area that used to be the pathway to the boathouse so that you could get a boat in a wave runner from the water into the boathouse. That area was, has now been entirely filled in. So is, is Mr. Adler still in this meeting? Is John Adler in the meeting?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Adler, I'm gonna, I'm gonna quote from, well, actually, I'm quoting from, from Chris Canning's letter, page three, which quotes what you said back in August about the grade. The grade, this says, "Existing grade is defined as the pre-construction elevation of the ground contour or as determined by the village engineer. Because the revetment is an artificial change to the height of the existing grade for shoreline protection, the village engineer has determined that the existing grade is the ground elevation at the foot of the revetment." And what, if, Mr. Adler, if I'm misstating either what you said then or what the village believes now, the point of that is that we have owners who have a very large revetment and a lot of construction that followed that in 2020 have also filled in artificially, well, they filled in with rock and sand and new dirt, an area which was a very large pathway going to their boathouse. And the significance of that for the zoning ordinance and for fences is that if the interpretation that Mr. Coachman and his lawyers have advocated tonight, if that were to be the rule, then what would happen or what could happen is that grade could be increased all the way down the lake, from the Coachman's house all the way down to the Sailing Beach at Gilson. That grade could be increased by getting a permit to put in stone, then backfilling it with dirt and rock and sand. And then, the owner of that property, if the owner believed that it was in their interests, could then say, "And, because this is part of our backyard, we'd like to put a six and a half foot fence on it." No one has said to the Coachmans that they can't put a six and a half foot fence in their backyard. The fence ordinance permits that, the fence rules permit that. What they can't do is, over the last two years, artificially build up the grade so that the grade is now fairly close going from the bottom floor of their beach house to the second floor, which is in fact the beach house portion. They can't build up that grade and then say, "On top of that, we'd like to put another six and a half foot fence." That's why they have to appeal here for a five and a half foot variation. Again, the significance of that is that all of this, 100% of what was just described is work that has been undertaken by the Coachmans at their direction and with them being the decision maker. Now, for a zoning board, a zoning board of appeal, the issue is, do you grant a five and a half foot extension? If that were the case, then you would look to, what's the precedent for that? Or what's the problem with precedent that could be created by that? That's what the criteria of the zoning ordinance invite and enjoin you to do. One of the things that Mr. Canning says, says it more than once, is that there is no fence in the village of Willmett that is similar to the fence that's being asked for now. Now, there is a list at the beginning of the board packet materials of backyard fence requests for variation. I think you saw that, it's right up at the front. And there were 21 requests for variation for backyard fences that at least are recorded in the materials that Ms. Roberts sent out with the board packet. 21. None of those are for neighbors in, on the lakefront with backyard fence applications. The largest of all of these variance requests, the largest of those 21 was two and a half feet and that was for a front fence. All of the rest were two feet and less and that's, and that's for the entire history. This is entirely unprecedented. And it's unprecedented for a situation brought upon all of us. And I include myself in that as someone who had to be at a zoning board meeting and my clients, my friends, Tara and Susan Elmasri, who couldn't be here because they're in Dubai and it's the middle of the morning there. So I'm sorry that they couldn't be here to express.
Are you, could you sum it up, please, if you could?
Well, yes, I can sum it up this way. The Coachmans have put themselves into a situation in which they have a number of remedies that are available to them. And those would include putting the fencing further back. There is nothing in anything that was said by the village or anything that has been said by anyone objecting to this, including their next door neighbors. There's nothing that says that they can't put a six and a half foot fence up in their, in their backyard to protect themselves from trespassers. They can do that, there are a variety of places they can do that. They have to be able to explain why they have a unique hardship and that the press, and they need to be able to explain why if they're allowed to build what they are now asking the zoning board to approve, why others down the lake won't then come back to the zoning board next year or the year after that and say, "Well, yes, we have built up our backyard to protect it from the lake and now that we've built it up, we want to put a fence on top of that." And I note that although Mr. Coachman referred to the situation of his neighbor immediately to the south, Randy and Cheryl Berman, who also have a beach house, they haven't put up a fence and no one else on that beach has put up a fence of this sort.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Are you, please sum it up.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that and I appreciate you giving me this time. We had about 45 or 50 minutes directly without any rebuttal. I'm trying to remind the board that there are zoning board considerations which are discussed in the letter. I also want to say just briefly with respect to Mr. Coe's comments, one of the things Willmett prides itself on is being a lakefront community and a lakefront community that encourages people to take advantage of Lake Michigan and encourages them to walk their dogs and run and sailboard down the beach. That's what, that is the spirit behind the public trust document. That's the basis on which people expect to be able to walk on the beach. They do not expect to be treated as trespassers. They do not expect to be treated as if they are invading private property. And I would point out also that this property that Mr. Coachman has referred to, this property that he says he has lost, is not property on which he's paying property tax. And you'll see that in the materials, which again goes to the question of the openness of this to the public.
I have a question. Thank you, I have a question for Mr. Adler, if he's still there.
Yes, sir.
John, some time ago, maybe three, four years ago, we had a case of a fence on a, on top of a retaining wall that the high end of the retaining wall was five feet of, of the bottom of the grade and then sloped to zero. And they wanted to put a six and a half foot fence on that and technically, the fence at the top of the retaining wall would only be 12 or 6 inches high. And they wanted, they wanted to continue that six and a half foot fence, you know, up to the retaining wall and they needed a variation, which we approved. I don't know if you remember that case.
I, I believe there was a request, a couple of homes down on the lakefront, on an interior side yard. Is that the case you're thinking about?
No, no, this was, this was not near the lake. It was off Sheridan Road, across from the, from the temple, I believe.
Ryan Hard, I think you're thinking of, there was a house on Canterbury that back to 336 Sheridan, and I forget.
Right, that's right. Yes, yes, okay. I just point that out as, as how you get into, it doesn't make any sense to have a 16 inch fence on top of the retaining wall. Anyway, sorry, other peoples that, Ms. Roberts, that wish to speak against this, I guess?
Yes, Alyssa Morganti has asked to speak after Mr. Bauger and then I see a couple other folks that will get after Alyssa, please.
Okay, and if you could, please be as brief as possible, I would appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. My name's Alyssa Morganti and we are a neighbor of Tara and Carrie and I know they're very nice people. And so this is nothing personal, it is simply, we live to the south, sorry, to the north of them and, you know, they're, they have created this large rock revetment going out, which I understand protects their house, the beach house. It is pushing way into the water and when it was going on, which we found out two days before it was, you know, before the barge showed up, there was the opportunity to put stairs in and we did bring it up right away with Shabika, who was doing the work for them. And we were, and we were told, "Oh no, you can't do that because it's not how it was originally" or some other thing about why they couldn't put the stairs in. And it feels like to me, I understand from Dixon O'Brien, it would be a major effort to put stairs in, but stairs could have been put in and it could have gone around the perimeter of the, of the revetment to allow people to walk past because it's so far into the water, you have to go into basically, you know, you're, almost your waist sometimes. So it has been a big impediment and it was a mile long of beach. And then, if you, you know, I submitted a photograph and I think I understand where this fence is supposed to go, though I did not see exactly, you know, but, but the photograph shows what I think it's gonna look like, which is, you know, a huge thing. It's coming up out of the ground like 14 feet with the rocks and then the fence on top of it. And it just is really, really unsightly. I don't know, Lisa, if you want to pull it up or if everybody's seen it, but it's pretty unsightly and it, and it will be affecting everybody's view of the lake when you look out or when you're walking by it, it becomes this huge barricade. So I just wonder why the fence can't go closer to their, their house instead of pushing out around the perimeter of the revetment. If you want to, to create security, you can put the fence along the side of your house or even right in front of your house, the beach house. So, and, and I think it's a, you know, a bad precedent to set, which Peter Bauger was talking to, of, you know, this is a created elevation. There was, the elevation was down that grade where, where you brought your boat into the bottom of that house. So he has elevated the grade and. So he has elevated the grade, and then putting the fence on top seems like just an awful idea for our beachfront. And then I don't know if any of you got to see, yeah, that's, that's what I think it's going to look like. And it's just like this huge barrier, and looks terribly ugly. And then we were walking on the beach this past weekend, and we saw the people a little bit farther down on Michigan who just put in, or rebuilt their revetment that was there. And Lisa, if you can put that up, what they did is they, they brought in the new granite, because the granite is much stronger than the limestone that was originally built there in the 80s. So they brought in all this granite, and then you can see they put the stairs in, in limestone, to actually, well, here are the stairs, go ahead and cross our revetment and use these stairs, and be careful. And then it's hard to tell, but on the right side of the photograph, you can see the fence. So they're keeping their property entirely fenced in right up to, you know, whatever that is, 15 feet to the water's edge there. And then they start with all the new granite boulders that they brought in to re their revetment. So I, you know, these people did it, and, and it's an awfully, you know, nice way to say, "Here, pass along and enjoy the walk."
I have, this is Fred Wilson, I'm also at 1330 Sheridan. I have quick comments. I would like more detail or more discussion, because we have seen those boulders out in the revetment moving around all during the past year, and anchoring a fence to the top of a boulder that will move. To me, feels like it's going to create a more dangerous situation when the wrought iron begins to break apart and you get sharp objects that can be, you can get impaled on. And where the new tangent wall is, that is a firm, finite place, because it goes down into the seabed, which is 18 feet below, into the clay, I feel that that fence could be mounted safely and securely to that tangent wall, and then allow the front to still be open. So that's, that's our statement, if anybody has any questions for us.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, anyone else who wishes to speak against this?
We have, Ann Hinkamp is up alphabetically next, please.
Hi, I'm Ann Trotter Hinkamp. I'm representing my mother, Donna Lee Trotter, who is inefficient and working with this type of communication. So I am here for her 50-plus-year resident of Willmett. Totally understands the issues that the Kochmans are going through, and has had some issues of her own of people trespassing. So there's no doubt about that, and it's, I apologize and feel bad that you're dealing with that. It's just this, the look of this whole thing, how elevated it is, it's, it does seem like an eyesore. And then there's just this concern that, that will then everyone along that lakefront be wanting to construct the same thing. And it just is just making a dramatic change, and my mother is against it.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question? You mentioned you're representing your mother in this. Where does your mother live that she-
I'm sorry, 11, she's 11-
Needs representation.
She's 1156 Michigan Avenue, so she's just about three doors down.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Roberts?
And looking through our guest list, there's somebody named Dave. I'm not sure if he would like to speak. Um, and that's, that is everybody that I see. So I guess maybe just one last call, if there's any who hasn't spoken who'd like to.
This is Dave, I would like to say something. I have been over, if you can hear me, I have been over at the Kochmans, and I have personally witnessed some of the abusive behavior of the people that have gone by, to the point that I came down to try to break up an altercation. I was concerned for everybody's safety of it. When they speak to the fact that people going by are threatening and abusive, it was very disconcerting, to the point that I was worried about safety for people.
Thank you, could you give us your full name and address, please?
My name is David Perry. I had lived in Willmett from 1980 through about 1990. I'm no longer a resident of Willmett.
I see, okay, thank you. Have we heard from anybody else, Ms. Roberts?
I believe that is it.
What about Karen Miersman?
Karen is our cable person.
Oh, there you go.
What about emails or other forms of communication? Do we have anything?
No, you have received everything that I have received.
Okay, thank you. I, I guess now is the time for the applicant and his attorney, their attorney, to have the last word. So please proceed, I think, I assume you've made notes of all the issues that some of these people have raised, so please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me? Hi, this is, this is Ron Cope. I'd like to- Okay. First of all, I listened very intensely to what Mr. Bogger had to say. And what ultimately he said is that the Kochmans did a lot of work to protect their property from flooding, from the lake's encroachment on their property. And what you have to remember is that they did it all lawfully. They did it legally. They got the permits that they needed from all of the government agencies that had to approve the work they did. They did nothing illegally. As far as annoying Mr. Bogger or his clients, from my understanding, his clients don't even occupy the place, they live in Dubai. So I'm not sure how much they were annoyed, but their annoyance is not a reason for denying this, this request. As far as the suggestions regarding putting in a stairway or the concern that Mr. Wilson has about whether the fence is going to be stable or not, you heard from the experts who are going to install the fence, and they've explained how the fence is going to be installed. And so there's absolutely no reason to deny it based on the speculation by Mr. Wilson that the fence might come loose, because he doesn't know exactly how it's going to be installed. That is a non-argument, and should be ignored by you. I think an overarching point that nobody seems to have pointed out, and I'm going to say it again, is that no one spoke to the issue of protecting the public, and protecting the public's safety. And the fact that, as you know, Evanston passed an ordinance calling for people not to be able to go onto the revetments. Revetments can be dangerous. So on one level, you're doing exactly what you should be doing to protect the safety of the public. And you've heard repeatedly, uncontradicted testimony of both Tara Kochman, and Carrie Kochman, and others about the intrusion of people who seem to feel that they can walk right up to the Kochman's house, to the beach house, and insult them, and claim that they're causing the problem with the beach, which is probably one of the most absurd arguments that I've ever heard. So let's, let's put this in perspective. As things stand right now, the lake will recede eventually. When the lake recedes, the beach will be restored. People will be able to walk on the beach. There is nothing about this fence that will prevent people from walking on the beach. And that, that's clear. There's nothing that's being done with this fence that will keep people from walking on the beach. As far as what's sightly and unsightly, your zoning code specifically says that you don't judge this by the aesthetics. But from my perspective, there's nothing unsightly. I've been on the property, I've looked out over the water. I think it's a beautiful view, a beautiful scene, and people who live in this area have something really beautiful to look at. I would just remind everyone that the Kochmans have done everything that they can to preserve this area and to do it in a lawful way. And there is nothing that you've heard tonight that in any way, shape, or form contradicts that. And so as you go forward with your vote, which should be to grant their right to build this six and a half foot fence, as you go forward with your vote, keep in mind that granting this is in keeping with all of the lawful activities that the Kochmans have undertaken, the huge amounts of money that they have spent to preserve this area, and they're good citizens in Willmett. So this is a good reason to grant this request, and you have heard nothing that would contradict that request.
Thank you. Any other comments from the applicant? I have a, I have a question before we go and make a motion. And maybe John Adler can also opine. What if the neighbor to the south were to build a revetment 150 feet into the lake, theoretically still on its property, and then build a fence on top of that? What would that, is that, that be legal?
I think two things. One, I do, I do think they're putting revetments not parallel to the, to the actual rear property line and going out into the lake would probably prove difficult. I know you talked about that earlier. We would look at it the same way, is if somebody, if somebody built a revetment, and, and there's different types of revetments. Some revetments create beach the way that they're designed, and they allow sand form, and actually, they add property to, you know, to a private property owner's land. We would look at it the same way. We would look at the top of the revetment and compare it to the adjacent grade, and if that revetment's six feet high, they could have a, without asking for a variation, a half foot high fence. Otherwise, they would have to come in and ask for that approval. I know that any revetment that would, again, not run parallel to the, the rear property lines of homes on the lake, the, you know, the villages going to look at those really closely and, you know, try to work with the state, because I, I think that is something that we hope not to see much of.
How, how did they get permission? How did somebody get permission to put that pile of boulders offshore?
I think that pile of boulders is just sitting there for the work that was taking place. There's a couple of things happening. The revetment with the stairs, that was just redone, and I think that was just finished. There was a mention of a revetment that is actually running adjacent to the beach house that is to the south there. That's one that's the type of shoreline protection, which it doesn't appear that the state has an issue with. Again, that's running up parallel to the lakefront. I don't know if it were, if those boulders were there or if those boulders were for the redoing of the historic revetment, which was the one with the stairs. But I don't, I don't believe those, those boulders are intended to remain in the water.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I am, I-
If I might, let me just respond to the question. I just want to make the point that each of these revetments may be highly unique. Ours is a fully enclosed revetment that is preserving pre-existing land. I think somebody who puts a revetment out into the lake that is aligned, that would be categorized as a groin, and I think very different things may apply to that. So we have a very particular circumstance where we have a fully enclosed revetment that predates the EPA and many of these agencies and its grandfather. There's a lot of discussion about why we didn't put a walkthrough. We couldn't repair, we would have to re-permit, and we had an urgent situation. That might have been a 20 more a month timetable to even consider putting the stairs in. And as you heard today, that would not afford the protection, and we'd be destroying part of the pre-existing revetment. So I just want to make the point that what's before you today is very unique. And if you choose to, you can consider each one of these circumstances differently. When somebody is accumulating sand, that's radically different than somebody retaining their backyard.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Koch.
I'd just like to make one comment also, just in response to Mr. Bogger's comment that we don't pay taxes on that property. I'd just like the record to reflect that Mr. Bogger, the information that he put into the record is not our property. It's a different property PIN number that does not belong to us. So I don't know what property he was referring to, but that is not our PIN number. We do pay property tax on all of our property.
Thank you. Any, any other comments by the applicant or the representative?
Chairman Schneider and members of the board, thank you very much for your time tonight. As Mr. Cope told you earlier, and I agree, this is a fence in a backyard case. It just happens to be on the lake, but the fundamentals don't change. The Kochmans are entitled to the fence, they're entitled to have it in their backyard, they're entitled to have it under revetment. And the height issue is really a function of a determination of grade, which we believe is subjective. And it is up to you, and that's why we have a variance process as to, you know, what is the proper, proper size of the fence. And we think we've demonstrated for the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of the community, that this is an appropriate size. Aesthetics is, specifically on willmett.com, aesthetics is not part of the zoning ordinance. And what you should focus on is the health, safety, and welfare. This is to remedy an unsafe situation, and it protects the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. I guess we now can, somebody can make a motion, please.
Well, I do, I just have a question. I just want to confirm, before we go to the next phase of the meeting, the entire fence is on the property, correct?
Yes.
Does it extend any further?
No, the entire fence is on the property. As Mr. Cope said, and former, former village manager, former corporation counsel, Tim Frenzer, specifically citing the 1860 case, the lot line is where the still water is. So all of the fence is inside the water. It does not impede anyone walking across. It is on the revetment, inside of the water, it is on the Kochman's property.
But could that have changed, could that line have changed if the erosion was worse?
The only way that line changes is if the water, the actual lake level is higher than the, I think, is higher than the top of the revetment. And if-
Correct.
If, if that happens, Mr. Sermon, we have much greater problems than a fence on a revetment for all of us.
Okay. And just as a general comment, I want to, you know, I, it has nothing to do with the approval, but, you know, as a designer of high rises, as an architect, I'd be very concerned about putting a fence like that on those, on the pieces of granite. You know, I share the same sentiment as Mr. Wilson, and that's just a side note. Due to movement of those over time, I don't see it, but I know that you, the Kochmans would take care of any issues. But I raise concerns about that as a professional.
Thank you, are we ready to make a motion?
I move to recommend granting a request for a 5.54 foot fence height variation to permit the construction of a 6.5 foot tall open fence on an existing revetment at 1174 Michigan Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Here is your, is your motion.
We've had many difficult cases in my short time on the zoning board of appeals, but I think this is probably the most difficult. And we've heard about a lot of issues that I've concluded don't fall under the purview of the zoning board of appeals. And what that says to me is that I need to come back to the standards of review. And as I look at the standards of review, there are three standards that the Kochmans, I don't think they legitimately meet. The first of these is that the plight was not created by the owner and is due to unique circumstances. The Kochmans didn't build the revetment, but they did rebuild the revetment. Within the footprint of the original revetment, I will grant you that, I assume. Uh, but the fact is, they rebuilt something that was falling apart. And so the height of the existing revetment, um, is a creature of their creation. This standard also refers to unique circumstances. And, um, in, from my perspective, uh, their circumstances are not unique. I, I asked Lisa to look up how many lakefront properties there are in Wilmette and she told me that there were twenty-six. Uh, so the concern about rising lake levels, erosion, loss of property, and in particular, the security question, um, is something that is quite broadly shared amongst other lakefront property owners. The second, uh, standard that I think is not met is that the difficulty or hardship is peculiar to the property, uh, in question.
You're bouncing in and out.
I'm sorry.
You're bouncing in and out, you're, you're, the sound.
And I don't know what to do about that.
Okay.
You sound okay to me.
I, I would suggest that anybody that's not speaking, mute their, their speaker, because what happens is you get feedback.
All right, to continue, the, the second standard that I feel is not meant, met is the difficulty or hardship being peculiar to the property in question. Um, I spoke a minute ago about the rising lake levels, the loss of beach, the erosion, the security issues. Uh, these are all issues that are shared, uh, by other property owners, um, along the lakefront. Uh, the third standard that isn't met is that, uh, it keeps the homeowner from making a reasonable use of, uh, their property. And, um, it seems to me that while staff has not dictated the location of a fence, uh, they have provided the outline, the contours of what is considered to be the elevation from which the six and a half feet, uh, would be measured. And that it then affords the Kochmans the opportunity, uh, to build a fence, uh, to provide for their safety, uh, uh, you know, they're, they're not prevented from doing that. Um, I, I want to now jump to the fence standards and, uh, just point out that the second standard, uh, refers to the extent to which fences of the same type sought by the applicant already exist. And we've heard ample evidence that, uh, this type of fence does not exist along the lakefront at the moment. And I believe that if we were to approve one fence, that, that would be seen as a precedent and other property owners along the lakefront would very quickly, uh, apply for variances, uh, to build the same type of fence. Possibly after building revetments or rebuilding revetments. Um, I, I think, uh, it, it is not in the spirit of, uh, being a lakefront community in the way that Wilmette sees itself. So those are my thoughts. I, I will not be supporting this proposal. Bob, you're muted. Bob, you're muted.
Oh, thank you, sorry. Um, I agree with some of the sentiments of that. Uh, at the same time, uh, I look at it from what I, what, uh, what could they do? What could they have done? Um, and, you know, part of it is they have the right to protect their property. Not, not from trespassers, but just the property itself. And from that boathouse, if the revetment didn't go out as far as it did into the lake, I could see waves destroying it. So if the revetment, if you said, okay, well, the revetment, maybe we should have pulled it in halfway. It shouldn't have gone out into lake far enough. You could still cause damage to that property. And I guess, you know, then I look at, if the fence was pulled in.